Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Dibala.
Present.
Councilmember Kostick.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Councilmember Cersei.
Here.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Our agenda tonight is not changed. And just to let you know our upcoming agenda items, the council will not be meeting next week, Wednesday, November 2nd. Election Day is Tuesday, November 8th. We will not meet on the 9th. And then we, the next time council will meet will be on Monday, November 21st to, oh, no, I skipped. We'll have a special meeting of the council on November 16th to receive certification of the election results. So that's Wednesday, November 16th at 7:30. And then Monday, November 21st, we have the final meeting of this council. And we'll have council remarks, introduction of our youth council, and the swearing in of newly elected city council. That will be followed by a reception, a dessert reception in the atrium, right after the swearing in and everything. So that is our agenda. Before getting into our meeting this evening, I wanted to take a bit of time at the beginning to recognize and share the news that unfortunately, our community has lost another longtime resident, Colleen DePaul recently passed away. She was a resident of Victory Towers, and her son and daughter-in-law and grandchildren live on Sycamore Avenue. Colleen was a very active member of our community. She was the driving force behind having RiteOn change its route of the 18 bus so that Victory Tower residents could easily get to the community center without transferring buses. She worked to expand the hours of the senior room to allow greater access to the computers and ensuring that residents who needed assistive hearing devices at council meetings received them. Colleen was head of the Transportation Committee at Victory Tower, and besides the RiteOn change, also lobbied the city and state for safer sidewalks and crosswalks on Carroll Avenue. She loved to play table tennis at lunchtime in the community center and was a great friend of Pat Rumbaugh and could be found volunteering in the last few years at our playdays. And so I know all of us in the city extend our sympathies and our thoughts are with her son, daughter-in-law, and grandchildren. So I just wanted folks to know about Colleen. So moving forward then, we have public comments. First, we'll take public comments in the auditorium and then move to public comments online. Public comments in the auditorium, first we'll do any public comments on voting items. We have six voting items tonight. One is the second reading charter amendment resolution to update the charter amendment process. Any voting, any comments on that? Next, we have the second reading charter amendment resolution to update the personnel appeals process. Then we have a resolution providing for the appointment to COLTA. Resolution regarding pedestrian and transportation safety. Single reading ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with collaborative strategies. Our final item is a single reading ordinance rescinding ordinance 2022-37 and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Pay Corps for the Human Services Information System. All right. Seeing no public comments in the auditorium on voting items, I'll turn to public comments on any other general items here in the auditorium before moving to online comments. Anyone have any comments, public general comments tonight?
Yes. I want someone to go first. Just, I'm desperate. My son's desperate. What do I have to do to get help for him? What do we, and people like him. What do I have to do? He's like dead inside. He has a horrible job. I don't, he doesn't know from day to day when he has to be at work as a doorman and ballet. He's 37 years old. He lives with me because I can't even afford to fix up the basement for him. I mean, what, what, what do you have to do to help us? Please, please, I mean, do I have to, okay? On my knees? What do I have to do? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Machuie. Any other public comments in the auditorium? Seeing none, we'll turn to public comments online. I'll turn to the, I think we had one on a voting item on the second reading charter amendment resolution to update the amendment process. Are we, can you turn on? Tom, can you hear us?
Are you talking to me?
Yes, you're up.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Stewart. I want to again thank Councilmember Peter Kovar, as I often do, for his prompt and informative response to my inquiry about the contracting out of the administration of the $100,000 for qualifying tenant direct assist, cash assistance program that was launched this week. I trust Peter when he says, "All of you thoughtfully considered whether this function should be carried out by city staff or a private company, in this case, Live Stories." I appreciate what Peter does, even though in this instance, I would have been harder to persuade to excuse city staff from this work than you were. I think it was Senator John Pastore of Rhode Island who was known to say, "A million here, a million there. Next thing you know, you're spending real money." $149,000 for Live Stories, some more money for another contractor consultant, and more for yet another. And before you know it, you're spending real tax dollar, real taxpayer dollars. To share a deep insight into the obvious, no matter where you get revenue or how much you have, the ultimate question is, what do you do with that money? The solution to ever increasing property taxes, which is a regressive tax, is not to first ask the Maryland General Assembly to grant additional taxing authority. It is to take a sober look at how money has been spent and determine how the city can live within our means. I've been listening to candidates for all six wards and mayor, and it appears to me there is a growing, if not universal, concern about how the mayor and councils have been spending money. It would be easy to reduce this discussion to A versus B, us versus you. The problem is too important to do that. While I'm not adverse to and even welcome different points of view, let's see the city's financial situation as an issue of utmost and immediate concern that all of us need to address and resolve together. This includes those of you remaining on the council, those of you leaving, newly elected council member and candidate, and those candidates who are not elected. It involves the entire Tacoma Park community. Address the crisis, the financial crisis that you, that is now confronting us. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more public comment online. Is Ms. Fiesley with us?
Yes, I am.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Jill Fiesley, and I live at 316 Tulip Avenue. Next Monday is Halloween, and I would like the city to take action to improve safety for the hundreds of children from all parts of the city who will be trick-or-treating along Maple Avenue. The specific ask is to have a crossing guard at the corner of Maple and Philadelphia avenues from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. I put a notice on my neighborhood listserv on Monday, and over 50 neighbors have signed onto a petition in support of at least having a crossing guard. Many of them actually have long advocated closing down a portion of Maple Avenue for a few hours to improve safety. I spoke with the city's acting deputy police chief, Siperly, last week about my concerns and desire to increase safety. He stated it would not be possible to close down any length of Maple Avenue on Halloween. And when I asked about having a crossing guard at the busy Maple and Philadelphia intersection, he said the department did not have the money to do that. As you may know, I'm a keen observer of trick-or-treaters on Halloween. Most kids do go out with adults or in groups. Most kids are careful. I do not know of any specific accidents where a child was injured on Halloween here in Tacoma Park. I have, however, heard of many near misses over the years. I'm especially worried this year as the city is in the middle of replacing the sidewalks along Upper Maple Avenue, and the kids might be forced to go into the street. I think having at least a crossing guard would be a visual reminder for everyone to use caution. Thank you for considering this idea.
Thank you, Ms. Fiesley. Any other public comments tonight? I think that's it. All right. Now, I actually forgot, I wanted to welcome representatives from Troop 33 who are here tonight in our community center for our meeting, working towards their citizenship in the community requirement. So thank you so much for joining us tonight. Next, we'll move on to council comments. Anyone on the city council have comments tonight? Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd first like to thank Jill Fiesley for those comments, and I understand it can be tough to have the personnel to help out on Halloween, but if there's a way that that could be done, I would encourage the staff to take a second look at that. And I just want to stress, I've heard from people about this, not only Jill, and what they're talking about really is providing some safety and protection for kids coming from elsewhere in the city to their area. And so this is not just, let's save our own kids, although I'm sure they want to do that as well, but Maple Avenue has become a real magnet because it's a nice, long block, and it has a lot of houses on it. It's a great place to trick or treat. So I would appeal to the staff if there's a way to make some version of what Jill's talking about happen, I would appreciate it. I'd also just like to acknowledge Tom Gagliardo's comments. Obviously, people have a range of concerns about the budget. I just want to stress that in the case of the Direct Payment Assistance Program, which comes from ARPA, and the Contract for Live Stories, the group that's going to send that out, also comes from that. So yes, ARPA funds come from federal taxes, if you want to look at it that way, but that's not connected to the, to the property tax. And I think our reason for doing that, and my colleagues, I think, would agree with this, the city hasn't really done a program like that where we send out benefits on the basis of income levels. And I think there was a concern that with everything else going on, we didn't have the expertise to be the lead on that. And so that was why we, why we chose that group. Speaking of Maple Avenue and the sidewalks, there is a concern that's arisen, I just became aware of it, a couple of people, not everybody, a couple of people have found out from the city that they had worked out what they thought was a viable plan for combining or meshing with the city work on the sidewalks, what they're doing in their own, on their own property to have the sidewalk construction work fit in with their, the topography and the terrain in their own places. And now it's emerged, and I don't have all the information on this yet, but that some of the people may have to get historic area work permits. And so now, having worked out what they thought was a viable schedule with their own contractors to fit in with the city's plans, then anytime you get a historic area work permit, that's a delay of several weeks at least. So I'd ask the staff if they could look into this and clarify whether that's necessary in this case. Couple of other things, I'm glad that the mayor mentioned Colleen DePaul. And I can just tell you, I played ping pong with her a few times, and she had a walker, and she was still, it was kind of an even match. So I was really impressed with her spirit and her athletic efforts, even at a very advanced age. And, you know, I thought I was good, but I found out that day that maybe I wasn't as good as I thought I was. So thank you, and appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Kovar. Councilmember Smith?
First, I'd like to thank everyone who spoke today, and thank those that are in the auditorium for coming out. Want to thank OTBA and Laura for putting together an incredible street festival on Sunday. I think it was fantastic, even though we had to move the date, there were a lot of people who showed up. So I want to thank everyone that came out. It was, it was a great time talking to residents of Tacoma Park. Monster Bash is going to be this weekend, and I will also be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilwoman Dibala?
Yes. Ditto on the street festival, thanks to the staff and to OTBA, and go Troop 33. I'll stick around afterwards, or you can call me if you have questions to follow up on the meeting. I'm sorry I wasn't able to get here sooner. Three announcements, and then just a couple of thoughts. So we, there was a minor master plan open house, maybe the staff is going to talk about this. It was a minor master plan open house. There's a follow-up survey for people who were not able to attend. And I have the information, as do many of the other council members. So if anyone listening wants to, couldn't make that, that meeting, and wants to look at the, look at the presentations and comment, just shoot me an email. There's also, speaking of the Washington Adventist Hospital area minor master plan, there's a presentation by the university on their thoughts on the minor master plan and what the future of that area would be. On November 2nd, from 7:00 to 8:00, it's virtual. There's a QR code and a bit.ly address to sign up if people are interested. Again, anybody want to know more, just tell me. Third, November 15th, Ethan Allen and Elm Perennial Hotspot for Traffic and Pedestrian Safety. There'll be a community meeting at 7:00 o'clock, again, virtual. Again, if you want in details, get ahold of me. I will, I will not be at the, in person on November 16th because I'll be at the National League of Cities meeting, and I'll be calling in. But because of that, I feel called to say tonight, to thank all of my colleagues for a great two terms, for the support and the passion you've brought to, to the job, and the cooperation that we've shared, and the, of course, the things we've gotten done. And thank you to the city staff and leadership for putting up with us. And that would be it for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kovar, did you put your light back on for a reason?
Oh.
Nope, just checking.
All right, three minutes, we're up.
All right. Councilwoman Kostick.
All right. Good evening, everyone. First of all, thank you to everyone who commented and is in the audience today. Welcome to the troop members. Thank you for being here. Also, I think just Halloween is coming up, and I think the issue in general of safety is an important one on Halloween throughout the city. And want to take this opportunity to remind people that if you're driving that evening, please be careful, have your eyes on the lookout for pedestrians, because there will be a lot of young children out that evening. Just a couple of updates, I want to echo my colleagues' thanks regarding the street festival. It was a really, really great event, and I feel like it just somehow manages to get better every year. So thank you for, to everyone who worked on that. It was really great to see the community out. Mayor Stewart and I will be, as well as Director Braithwaite, will be doing a walkthrough with DDOT later this week to look at Eastern Avenue and safety issues there. And obviously, I won't be continuing in my role very soon after the election, but I will make sure that that information gets passed on to the next council member for Ward 3 so that we can continue our work with DDOT. It's definitely been a long process to get to the point where we're having a little more collaboration from them in terms of the safety issues there. And so want to keep up that momentum and make sure that we're continuing to move that forward. And then finally, just wanted to let everyone know that the Village of Tacoma Park is looking for volunteer drivers. They have opportunities for people to volunteer to drive, people who need rides to doctor's appointments and other places. And they're having an orientation this, or next Thursday, a virtual orientation. And if you're interested, you can find out more at villageoftocomapark.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cersei.
Great. Well, I want to thank all of those that provided comments tonight. I want to echo my colleague's sentiment around working with city staff to make sure that we have a plan in place for Halloween. I know we'll have aspects of Monster Bash happening this weekend, but definitely want to make sure that we're doing what we need to do to protect the youth as they're walking around, and it's getting dark a lot sooner. So want to make sure that folks are safe. Want to thank OTBA for a wonderful street fest. It was amazing. Lots of folks, people I hadn't seen in a very long time. So it was such a wonderful opportunity to engage with the community. Quick update, unfortunately. Hillwood Manor Playground is, it's still going up, but there was a construction issue. So the playground is expected to be complete in December. What that means for us is that we're still going to have the playground in December. It just means that perhaps our ribbon cutting will be, will be delayed. So just wanted to give folks a heads up. I know residents have said they see concrete, and that's a great thing. So fingers crossed, we will keep the pace with the playground development. Also want to thank the troop members that came out tonight. Thank you so much for coming and spending time on a Wednesday evening to learn about city government. And I think that is all that I have for tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. I just want to repeat the thanks to Laura Barclay and all the volunteers for a great street fest. I'm glad it was able to go off today. And I just want to thank the staff for all their work. I understand we need to be diligent with our spending, but I will say, the work that has gone into the direct cash assistance and getting this up and running has been enormous. And I just want to particularly recognize our deputy city manager right now, who I, I don't know how late it was that you and I were actually texting and calling, and I was sending you screenshots of the program the other night, the application, to make sure everything worked. And so I just, I want to extend my thanks. This is a program that we've never undertaken before in the city. It's exciting to see, hoping it goes smoothly moving forward. And what was it, Tuesday night or Monday night, whenever it was, we were able to get the kinks out before residents had the opportunity to get on, on Monday, on Tuesday morning. So I just, I really just want to extend my thanks to all of you. And just want to say, since we won't meet until after the election, good luck to all those who are running. Thank you for everyone who has put their hat in the ring to serve our city. It is a privilege to do so, and I just want to thank everyone as we're entering the final days. And also thank our staff and our Board of Elections as they start counting ballots and getting everything ready for that. And I think with that, I will turn it over to our deputy city managers to see if they have comments.
Thank you, Mayor Stewart. I do have a few announcements. Thank you for the lead in to the direct cash assistance. Just a reminder to the community, the program is up and available. There are two requirements, that it is for Tacoma Park residents, and it is for households with less than a $50,000 income. We are hosting two events next week to assist anyone who needs help, either tech help on the computer or confusion on uploading documents or things like that. Thursday, November 3rd, from 3:00 in the afternoon to 9:00 p.m., we will have interpreters available in Spanish and Amharic, and that'll be in the city building in the hydrangea room. And we have a second one scheduled for Saturday at the library, tentatively scheduled, and that time is yet to be announced. I have some numbers. As of 5:45 today, we had received 333 applications. Forty-one have been approved. Twenty-four have been denied. The overwhelming majority of those were because they were outside the city limits. So the information, as you may be aware, has gone broadly through the, through the area. And so had an email just before this meeting from someone in Germantown, you know. So we're, we're hearing from lots of folks, and that is one of the requirements. I also have some demographic information. We will get this regularly. There is a dashboard up on the direct cash assistance webpage, the city webpage. It is updated at something like 11:30 every evening. So you can see for yourself some of those numbers as we move forward. In three weeks, we will have, we will touch base, I mean, we're in constant contact, but we will reassess and see if we need to do additional outreach, in-person outreach events to encourage and help people understand how to go about applying. I also wanted to announce some good news, that the city received a grant today from the Maryland Department of Transportation, Kim Lamphier Bike Ways Program, for the Maple Avenue Connectivity Project design work. So the funding is $304,000 for 100% of designs and a feasibility study for the Sligo Creek Bridge, which, as you know, is extraordinarily narrow for pedestrians and pretty inhospitable for everyone. The, there, there will be a release tomorrow of an RFP for the redevelopment of the Tacoma Park Rec Center. So you can see that on the city webpage. It's the 7315 New Hampshire Avenue property. The intent is to identify a partner or partners to promote a reuse of the parcel to achieve multiple city objectives, including a redevelopment of the rec center and additional housing and amenities. Moving along, I'm almost there. We have a Chromebook giveaway with Montgomery County coming up on November 4th and November 12th. The events are at the Tacoma Park Rec Center. I guess, sorry? I'm sorry. November 5th and 12th, November 12th, at the rec center. They're actually set aside spaces for Tacoma Parkers. We have information available on the website for those who want to learn more about it. Just a quick wrap-up on the visioning for the Montgomery Planning-led Tacoma Park Minor Master Plan. There was an event last week. Over 110 members of the public attended. It is still possible to give feedback, and the way to do that, the information is on the city website on the Minor Master Plan Amendment page. So that's open until November 4th, if people have additional comments. And last, but definitely not least, I wanted to announce Monster Bash, which is coming up on Saturday, October 29th. It starts at the Tacoma Park Middle School parking lot, parades down Philadelphia Avenue to Maple Avenue, begins at 1:00 in the afternoon, 1:00 to 4:00, and it is free, and all are welcome. Thank you.
Can we?
Yeah.
Ms. Grisby, Mr. Clark, thank you so much for all your work on the Direct Cash Payment Program. This is fantastic news. When will the first checks go out?
The first checks will be cut next Tuesday, one week into the program. Generally, applicants, applications that come in that have the required documentation and are not complicated, it's about two weeks from submission to receiving a check in the mail. If there are applications that are missing a piece or it's not clear, then people may be contacted from forward for additional clarification about documents.
And I saw on the, on the dashboard, is it possible that we could include what parts of the city, the wards that these people are coming from that have applied?
I don't know if it'll be on the dashboard, but we are definitely going to get I don't know if it'll be on the dashboard, but we are definitely going to get a map on a GIS layer that will show us the location of the applicants. So we will make that available to you.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
I have also a question about the direct cash assistance, and thank you again for doing this cutting-edge work. I can't see online exactly how you document your income. Can you tell us briefly, tell everybody briefly, how some, how a family knows if they're the $50,000 or not?
Yes, thank you for asking, because that's really important information. The cap is a household of $50,000. The way a household is defined is by, essentially by people who would merge their finances. So a family is a household, but roommates are not one household. If you work separately, keep your finances separately, you're not a household with the other people who might be in the same place. People can document their income in a variety of ways. If they have pay stubs, they can submit the last month or two of pay stubs to demonstrate. If they are already in another program like SNAP or TANF, they can show their government benefits letter as documentation.
Okay.
Trying to think if there are some, if they don't have any income, I mean, there may be a way to demonstrate that with a letter of self-attestation, or maybe even something like a bank statement.
Okay, thank you.
Could I follow up with that? One other question on the direct cash assistance program. For people who do not have computers at home, is there a paper application they could submit?
They can do a paper application that they would send to us, and we would forward to our consultant, who would then input it as an online application. That is also part of the reason we have set up in-person events, so if they can come to the city building next week, they can do it with us on November 3rd.
Where could they find the paper application? Is that on the website?
I don't think there's a downloadable on the website.
No, I didn't see it there.
Yeah. I think the easier would be to talk to us or email me.
Okay.
And I can help work with them on it.
Thank you.
There's also, I should say, the number for Live Stories is on the city website. They also, they're listed as Forward there, and they can call, anyone can call that number. They also have interpreters available for phone calls if somebody needs those services.
Thank you.
And I know people have already used it, so it's good. People are using it and using the phone number. Councilwoman Kostick?
Thank you so much for all the updates. Really exciting about Maple Avenue and the Bike Ways Project. I just was curious, with that, will there be some ongoing public outreach related to that that will inform the design? Because I know there was some discussion previously about what the design would look like, and I'd love to make sure we have the public component there.
There definitely will be, yeah. There are several milestones along the way, not the least of which is the mandatory referral process with Montgomery County, which also has public comments, so there will be opportunities. Thank you.
Councilwoman Cercy?
I just want to go quickly back to the direct cash assistance. So there was some concern around wait times when people would call and there wasn't someone really available. Are we, what steps do we know that Forward is taking to try to deal with wait times when people are trying to call?
Thank you. We talked to Forward today about that, and they have set on a menu on their call that now lists Tacoma Park, but we also put on our website to press 8, which gets you straight through, Forward handles many programs around the country. So you can dial the number, and then when you get the menu, press 8, and it gets you through to the Tacoma Park project. And so I think that that will speed the process significantly. And I should also add, we have flyers out now in English, Spanish, and Amharic. Did we forward them to you already? Okay, so they're sitting in my queue waiting for that to happen. We have sent them to multifamily unit, property owners and managers. We're posting them in this building, the New Hampshire Rec Center, you know, various places, so doing our best to get the word out. It seems to be getting out.
Yep.
So that's good.
Great, thank you so much. Next item up is adoption of minutes. We will adopt minutes tonight from March 2nd, 9th, 16th, and 23rd. Would someone like to move adoption of the minutes? Councilwoman Dibala, do I have a second? Councilmember Siemens, any questions or comments?
I just have a quick comment. It was interesting going back and reading the minutes because you can see the progression of us complaining about the issues of safety at Lincoln and Carroll at that intersection, and then all of a sudden seeing the minutes when we have a stop sign there. And so it was really, it was fun to see the progression there, and really happy with that stop sign and the safety it's providing.
Great. Yeah, it's actually interesting sometimes to go back and be like, yeah, we did say that. So, all right. All those in favor of adopting the minutes from March 2nd, 9th, 16th, and 23rd, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstaining? All right, we will now move into our voting session. We have first the second reading.
Excuse me, Mayor Stewart.
Do we have something else?
You passed the vote for March but not April?
We, yeah, we didn't get that till 6th. I apologize, I talked to Irma about that, and we thought since we were going to get more minutes in, and we got them late in the day, that we probably couldn't review them in time. So we'll vote on them when we vote on the other minutes. My apologies for not alluding into that. Cool, all right, so moving to our voting session, the first item is the second reading, Charter Amendment Resolution to Update the Charter Amendment Process. We had no changes from the first reading. This has followed a work session and public hearing, so I think we're ready to do the final vote on this. Would someone like to move the Charter Amendment Resolution? Councilmember Siemens, do I have a second? Councilwoman Dibala, any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, since this is the second reading of the Charter Amendment, I will ask for the vote to be called.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostick?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Cercy?
Aye.
All right, next, we have the second reading, Charter Amendment Resolution to Update the Personnel Appeals Process. Again, like the other charter amendment, this, we had a work session on this a while ago in public hearing, and we are ready to take the final vote on this. Would someone like to move it? Councilwoman Cercy moved, do I have a second? Councilwoman Dibala, second. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, will we call the vote, please?
Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostick?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Cercy?
Aye.
All right, next, as we talked about last week, we have an appointment to our Commission on Landlord Tenant Affairs, Lauren Price. Would someone like to move this resolution to appoint Ms. Price?
Someone.
Councilmember Smith moved, do I have a second? Councilwoman Cercy, second. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Resolution passes. Next, we have a resolution regarding pedestrian and transportation safety. We had a work session two weeks ago, I believe, where staff presented an update on where we are in consideration of the Safe Roadways Committee's recommendations. Thank you to Councilwoman Dibala and Kostick for pulling together this resolution. Before asking for it to be moved, I will turn it over to Councilwoman Kostick.
Sure, thank you. Well, first of all, this is something that has been personally important to me for a long time, so I'm very happy to see us moving forward on this. I think it's something this council has talked about and wanted to move forward on, and appreciate the work of the staff on this as well. We had an update at our work session two weeks ago on progress towards pedestrian safety and bike safety here, and we made a lot of progress over the past several years, and this resolution is building on that, and really kind of more specifically calling for changes to our traffic calming and pedestrian, or traffic calming and new sidewalk request policies, as well as looking at speed limits and our kind of general comprehensive plan for pedestrian safety in the city. So appreciate the help of my colleagues. Many of you shared some updates and additions, as well as city staff, really, I think, helped improve the resolution from what we had a couple of weeks ago, and hopefully this will really move us forward in that work. I believe Councilmember Dibala has a friendly amendment to add tonight as well. So maybe I'll turn it over to you for that.
Well, thank you to staff for helping us to get to this point, and this does kind of capture where we are so that the next council can pick it up in terms of the work of the Safe Streets Committee and all the work since then. So I understand we have to have this moved first before I can do the amendment. Okay, so I'll stop talking for now.
All right. Would someone like to move?
I will move it.
Yeah. Councilwoman Kostick moved it, Councilwoman Dibala seconded it, Councilwoman Dibala has a friendly amendment.
Yes, after consulting with staff about the timeframes involved in progress on the items in the memo, in the resolution, the things we would like to see done by staff brought back to the city council so that the city council can make the next set of decisions. That's why it didn't get in here in the first place, we were waiting on the feedback. So to set the timeframe, the friendly amendment would read, it's the second resolved, to sort of slip it in there between the first and the third, be it further resolved that the city council directs staff to report back to council on the status of implementing this resolution within six months of the date of enactment. And that's Irma, the language that I sent to Jesse a couple of days ago. If you don't feel like typing exactly, write this in. So I propose that we add this to the resolution.
Great. Do I have a second for the amendment?
Second.
Councilwoman Kostick, second is the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Any opposed, first, sorry, it's going too fast. Any abstentions?
Nope.
Okay, amendment passes. Going back to the resolution, any other comments? Councilmember Kovar?
Just briefly, I want to also express my appreciation that the resolution has language on urging the more frequent reinstatement of the meetings we've had periodically with the State Highway Administration. I know all my colleagues have been at those, and I appreciate that the mayor had specifically recommended adding that language, and we've tweaked it a little bit further since then. And, you know, this is an opportunity for all the kind of hotspots along New Hampshire and University and Carroll, Piney Branch, Route 410, Philadelphia, et cetera, which are controlled by the State Highway. In many cases, those are among the ones where there really are pedestrian and other types of transportation and safety problems, and we just don't have control over them the way we do over our own streets. And so when we've been able to maintain those meetings with State Highway on a pretty regular basis, I think we have seen slowly, but we've seen the various hotspots and problem areas get addressed. And I think, you know, because of COVID and changes and staff at S.H.A. and other factors, it's been harder to maintain that, but I think it's really vital that we get back to that going forward. And so I'm glad that that's one of the items that's in here, and I urge the staff to, and those of us who are going to still be on the council in the future, to take that one seriously as well, and try to ensure that we have those ongoing meetings on a reasonable level of frequency. Thanks.
Great. And I will just say thank you to both Councilwoman Dibala and Kostick again, and I want to just comment that this, I'm very glad that we were able to get this done, particularly because this has been an area that Councilwoman Kostick has worked very hard on, and her work on transportation, pedestrian safety, and bicycle safety, you know, predates her time on the council, but she has been a huge champion in the city and working regionally as a representative on the Transportation Planning Board. And I can say, being on the COG board, I have heard only wonderful things about Councilwoman Kostick and her representation on the Transportation Planning Board. And I know you will be much missed on the board, and I just want to say thank you so much for all your work in this area. All right.
Thank you, and you know I'll be back commenting on this when the next council considers it.
Absolutely. All right, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? All right, moving on. Next, we have a single reading ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with collaborative strategies. We've been talking about this the last couple of weeks. As we talked about, given the number of changes in the city with staffing and other things, the city council has wanted to take proactive measures to foster effective decision-making and communication between the city's elected officials, city management, and ASME local 3399. We entered into a professional services contract with collaborative strategies to help on these issues in June. They did the first phase of the work, and we've received a proposal, which I know the deputy city managers have been reviewing. So this is just to formally request the city staff to enter into that contract and continue the work. Okay? All right, would someone like to move this, let's see, this is a single reading ordinance. Councilwoman Kovar moved, do I have a second? Councilwoman Cercy, second. Any comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, oh, yeah.
I'll just say really briefly, the mayor summarized things well. The point of this is not for the council to be involved in individual personnel matters. The point of this is to establish an overall structure for a healthier, ongoing relationship, and I think this is a good way of promoting that, especially when we're in a situation where there's a big transition, there'll be a lot of new council members, some new staff, et cetera. So I think this is an important step for us to take. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kovar. All right, since this is a single reading ordinance, let's call the vote.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostick?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Abstain.
Councilmember Siemens, sorry, Cercy.
Aye.
All right, finally, we have a single reading ordinance, rescinding ordinance 2022-37 and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with PayCorp for a human resources information system. I think we're going to turn this over to our deputy city managers to give us the background on this one.
Yes, thank you. In July, city council passed an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with PayCom. You recall, they had presented to council what the features were of their program. We were unable to successfully come to agreement in that process, and so we're asking council to rescind the ordinance for PayCom. You do not have before you a resolution for the ordinance with PayCorp because they actually came in under the $50,000 threshold that requires council action with all the same features and amenities that PayCom has, that the city's most interested in. So if you choose to rescind this ordinance tonight, we will go forward and negotiate with PayCorp for the kind of HRIS system that we desperately need. We have the HR Director Lori Cannon with us virtually tonight, so she's available to answer additional questions if you have them.
Great. Wonder if, Councilmember Kovar, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'm afraid I misunderstood, so maybe you can just explain. So it's two different companies, PayCorp and PayCom?
It is two companies, very similar names.
I thought we already rescinded the thing with PayCom.
You had a work session about it. I should have, I meant to mention it, it was in my notes. You had a work session in late September about rescinding the ordinance with PayCom, and at the time, we were, we recognized that we weren't able to come to agreement with PayCom. We were beginning the conversation with PayCorp, and we thought we could do this all at once, and then it turned out that we didn't need council's authorization to move forward with PayCorp.
Okay.
All right.
I'll just say, I'm sorry, the information I sent out to residents on this point was slightly inaccurate, and I apologize for that confusion. Corp and Com.
It is confusing.
Councilwoman Cercy?
Councilwoman Circe?
I just want to make sure that I, because we received the presentation of all of the functionalities for Paycom, and I recognize that Paycor has the features that we really want, but are there things that perhaps would have been nice that are kind of being left behind, or really what we need is going to be covered?
Truthfully, it looks like the same bells and whistles.
Okay.
I mean, Lori, do you want to chime in on that? She's gone through it in much more detail than I have.
I couldn't disable my camera, sorry. But yeah. They're very similar. It's just a different company.
Okay. And just remind me of the potential cost savings between the two?
I'd say over, a little over 50K between the two. Paycor's coming in around 43K, and I believe Paycom was around maybe a little over 100.
Oh, wow. Whoa. Okay, all right, thank you very much. Makes this a little easier.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dibala?
I was going to say something similar to Councilmember Kovar, I think I made the same typographic misread and sent out the same not-quite-right information, so I'll fix that in my newsletter, but thank you for clarifying. So we are getting essentially the same services for less money and more cooperation on reaching a contract. That sounds good to me. Thank you.
All right, not seeing any other questions or comments, would someone like to move this single reading ordinance?
Move.
Councilmember Siemens, sorry. Do I have a second? Councilwoman Circe? All right, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, since this is a single reading ordinance, I'll ask that we call the vote on this.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostick?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe?
Aye.
Great, and thank you, Ms. Cannon, for joining us this evening and your work on this. Always nice to end a meeting, saving money. All right, to do what?
Missed the public comment section.
Oh, all right, well, all right, I will break the rules just once, because
This is going to be the last meeting.
This is my last meeting. So you caught me at a good time.
Thank you, and my apologies for missing the public comment section. Max Finnberg, one of the Assistant Scout Masters of Troop 33, expressing my thanks to our host community, to you especially, Mayor Stewart, the last time I'll be able to, in a public forum, call you that, for having taken the time throughout your career and tenure to work with scouts, whether that was the judging of the Pinewood Derby Contest when the Cub Scouts, or meeting with individual scouts to go over their rights and responsibilities as citizens. Much appreciated. Thank you for having Owen and Matias with you tonight. And my day job is working to end hunger and poverty, and I have to commend the city staff and all of you for the Direct Cash Assistance, which, as you probably have heard, research shows is a much more effective way of addressing poverty. Hopefully, Mr. Clark, you were able to mention to the woman who is pleading for help that that at least is a possibility. My thanks.
Thank you so much. I think that is a wonderful way to conclude our evening tonight. Thank you all, don't forget to vote. Vote in our local city elections, vote in the state elections, and thank you all, and have a good evening.